At this time, I call the regular meeting, July 14th, County Commission to Order. We have a good Lincoln County fellows I've known all my life. We grew up kinda next door neighbors, there's two, three houses between us. He's a lot older than I am, but I do remember him when I was a little boy running around the neighborhood. Those of you that don't know him, he has owned the C and B drugstore until he retired not long ago and sold it. Eddie, we glad to have you with us. Mr. Eddie Turner, if you will, come to the podium, he's gonna give our invocation. And after the invocation remains standing, Commissioner Henderson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance of the flag.
May we pray? Dear Father, before I go one more sentence, before I say one more word, I take one more breath, I ask you to come and be in this room. Bring your joy, bring your peace, bring your wisdom, Father. Lord, I know that no decision is made here, is made by us. It is formed, is directed by you, and there are things that you have. And the reason I know this is I know you have your hand on this candy, God. I know this morning, as I was down there listening to the Bible being read off the steps of this courthouse, God, that could not have happened without the permission from the people that are in this very room, God. Lord, just the symbolism of showing that the Word of God is being written and being said from the courthouse steps is unspeakably wonderful. Dear Father, I know that the decisions that are made here are hard. I know that sometimes they seem like we don't exactly know what to do, but Lord, I know when you're here and you're among us, that it's no different than the sons of Isacor. They knew the times and the seasons. A lot of people think they know what's gonna happen. A lot of people can look at the world and say, "This is going on, and that's going on." But to know the times and the seasons that will affect this county, God, that can only be from you. God, when, when I sit down and I think about Joseph, God, I mean, yes, Lord, that was a dream by a king. A lot of people walk in here with great dreams, great ideas, great things to do. But it was only when you gave Joseph the ability to interpret it, God, and to say, "There's gonna be a time of lean." So while the times are good, let's store up. God, those are the kind of things that you do that we can't. Do I think, God, it has to be somebody very special? Do I think that these people that are in this room, whether they're bringing the request or whether they're deciding the request, don't think about it at night? Don't think about what are the problems? How should this be presented? What is the best thing to do? Of course I do. But do I think that you also are speaking to them through the advice of others? Through the research that they've done? Through the night dreams they have from their times of contemplation about it? Of course I do. So Father, what I wanna say is, I thank you for your presence. I thank you for how you're intervening in the lives of all these people. And when I look at my county, the county that I live in, that I've lived in all my life, and I look back over history, and I see that everybody that seems to come in this county ends up loving it. God, can, is there any way that I could not say that you have not blessed us? That you're not continually blessed us? When I look at your word and you say that I know the plans I have for you, and they're for good and not for evil? And they ought to give you a hope and a future? God, I know that was written just for us. And so, Father, I wanna give you the praise, I wanna give you the glory, and I asked you to be in this room and have great decisions to be made that will carry this county forward. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you noticed we have a vacant seat? Commissioner Tankersley, District Four, is out of town, in school, had an Association County Commissioners of Georgia class that he needed, and therefore, he's not with us tonight. I'd also like to recognize a former commissioner, Commissioner Virginia Williams. He's in our audience tonight, always good to have you. Thank you for coming. Is that a motion that we approve the minutes of the past meetings as presented to you?
Some over, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carried. I have an addition to the agenda. Commissioner Tankersley is not with us. He has an appointment to a board. And he has asked that we go ahead and, on his recommendation, he would like for us to appoint this person to the Board of Tax Assistance. And we'll do that later on in the agenda. Probably, we'll probably make a twenty-three out of it and move the adjournment to twenty-four. Any objection to the addition to the agenda? If not, the agenda will be asked for approval. The motion that we approve the agenda with the recommendation.
I made the motion be approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. This time, item six on the agenda, be departmental reports from the Office of Emergency Services, Director Casey Brew.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, you have my generated reports. I have nothing to add this time, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, you have the report, him, is there any questions to Director Brew? If not, we thank you for your report, you have your printed reports. Item six B, Recreation Department, Director Glaze.
Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, you have my written report in front of you. You have any questions?
Okay, we have the report to the recreation. I see that the, one of the things that we might wanna announce is the soccer registration would be open, is open until Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
June 20th, and that's going on now. They go out to your office at the gym for that.
And it's July 20th, five o'clock.
Okay. Any questions, Director Glaze? If not, we'll move on to six C, Finance Department Director, Tony Dawson.
Chairman Commissioners, you have my printed reports. I don't have anything to add. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions to Director Dawson? Thank you, we'll move on to six D, Public Works Director, Robbie Seymour.
Chairman Members of the Board, you have all of my written reports. I don't have anything to add to those unless you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those at this time.
Director Seymour, I got a question, in case I'm misreading this thing. New single-family residence is six?
And I think that's the type of, I'm gonna have to check on that, Chairman. I saw that on the report, but I don't think that's correct.
Last time I looked, it was about twelve, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it's eleven or twelve, but I'm gonna have to double-check that, I'll let you know something.
That's a hundred percent difference.
Yes.
Okay, make that report, let us know, but I think that's, I think that's the type of graphical error, I hope it is anyway. Okay, any other questions, Director Seymour? If not, we'll move on with our agenda. Item number seven, we go into our public hearing. Is that a motion that we go into the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, we are in our public hearing. We have an applicant, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, on July the 11th, 2022, the Planning Commission heard the following request. The applicant is Odelai?
That's the reason I gave it to you.
Uh, property is located at 2450 Metersville Road, map 21 parcel 010, consisting of one acre, currently zoned A1 zoning. Uh, he is asking to apply for rezoning of the one acre to operate an automotive repair shop and rezonate from A1 to C3. Um, and the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to deny the request, and that decision was unanimous, Chairman.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request that has been recommended for denial by the Planning Commission? Anyone here to speak against? If not, I'm assuming that we will do that. Is anyone here that would like to speak? I really think I said that backwards, but if there's anybody here that would like to speak in, against the rezoning here. I understand you had some at your meeting, and I know we have some here. Would you like to speak, or you just?
I would, I would not mind speaking.
Come to the podium, state your name and your address. I'm assuming she's speaking against.
I am against the rezoning. Robin Snyder. Um, the reason that I am against it is I own the forty-nine acres that surrounds that one acre. Um, I've owned it since, my husband and I have owned it since 2007. Uh, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's quiet. Um, my boys hunt on it. My husband hunted on it until he passed away. And I think that it would ruin a beautiful piece of property to have an auto repair shop out there. I think that it would be impossible to keep it clean. And so, that's the main reason that I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this rezoning change? If you would, come to the podium and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Adiverto Olade, uh, 2450 Metersville Road. So, you know, we have operated a shop here in the middle of town for the previous three years. And, uh, you know, we've got, we're set up, but as you spoke about, you know, it would be impossible to clean up. You know, we, we have several companies that take care of all the disposal of any waste produced. Uh, we had extra bins that we, you know, got from the city to maintain the amount of trash and waste that was on the property. And, you know, the, it would only be operated from eight to six, so I don't see how that would affect any, or anything in the area. Uh, I have spoken to a couple of people that live nearby, and they were okay with it. Uh, I didn't really know who owned the big properties around there, so I wouldn't know how to affect with any of them. So I'd say, and, uh, being that we did already own that property while we, you know, wanted to put the auto repair shop there. As in, uh, a lot of commercial properties are a lot higher. And we figured that, you know, we own that property, and where we're operating now, it was less than an acre. So we figured an acre would be more than enough to do what we were doing there.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. Anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of? Okay, we have the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board to deny. I would like to state, though, that we want your business. We, we would like for your business to be in Lincoln County. I know you have a successful business where you work. The purpose of zoning, though, is to protect parts of the county where you do not allow certain things to happen because it affects the integrity of the property, the people around it. You know, I've had seven, eight people that talked in opposition that's not here. I don't know how many it was, they were beaten Monday night. We consider something like this a spot zoning that we, that we don't do. We would like to work with you any way we can of a different location, and I do understand that that's being taught now, too. And we would wish you the very best in a, in a different area. But that is a resident of agricultural type setting up there that we don't feel that it would fit into the comprehensive plan of our county. But Commissioners have to vote, and I'm gonna call for a vote. The recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board is to deny this request. And I would ask if that is a motion that we accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So I second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, and this piece of property has been denied. Okay, the next one is seven B, applicant for special use request, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. On July the 11th, 2022, the Planning Commission heard the following request. The applicant is Christian Kibo, located at 4110 Greenwood Church Road, map 32, parcel 24, consisting of ninety-eight point six zero acres, currently zoned A1 agriculture. Uh, the request is to apply for a special use for a vineyard, uh, Georgia Farm Winery and Vineyard, um, agricultural technology development. And the recommendation from the Planning Commission was approval, and that recommendation was unanimous, Chairman.
Okay, this is, um, an agricultural zone for a special use. Are the applicants here?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay, um, is there anyone here that would like to speak against the special use rezoning of this A1 property? Anyone against? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of? If you would, come to the podium, state your name and your address, and I've read your business plan, and it looks real good.
My name is Sarah Nixon. I'm the fiance of Christian Kibo. And we are at, our address in Lincoln County is 401 Greenwood Church Road. And, um, we are excited for the opportunity to give a place where the community can come together. And I love people, I hope that y'all can see that. Um, and I think that'll be a good place for, even though it's a winery that families can go to, we can have, um, different festivities of the Easter and different holidays. We can do, um, fall festivals, things along those lines that would, um, I think be very beneficial.
Stand that minute. This is a ninety-eight point six acre tract of land that is an A1 agricultural zone that agricultural business profile is what you are looking at. Uh, I see you got about a four or five year plan to come to completion with it. I personally like the business plan. I think it'd be an asset to Lincoln County. I've never, I've never known, I, I know we have some musky dines and scuppanons, but I've never seen any real big acreage of grapes. But I'm a little excited about the olive oil.
Yes.
Trees that will be planted and making olive oil.
Yes, we already have fifty-one trees planted. Um, and so, we are excited of the opportunity to start propagating those once they get a little bit bigger. They're probably about this high so far. They're doing really well.
And I see you're gonna have a lot of pecan tree.
Yes.
So you're going to, you're going to promote Georgia agriculture, and I like that. Do you have anything else you wanna say before we vote? Okay, thank you, and thank you for choosing Lincoln County for your investment. We hope that you'll be very, very successful, and this will be good for you and good for Lincoln County. We look forward to y'all getting married, moving up here, and raising a family, and putting them in school, and all this kinda stuff, you know? And if there's any way that we can help you naturally, you know that we will, and again, we thank you for it. Um, you've heard the request from the Planning and Zoning Board that we approve the special use for this A1 property. Is that a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Board?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So I second.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, that motion, do we come out of our public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, we come out of the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion? Let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, we back into our regular County Commission meeting. All of those that wanna leave, you're welcome to leave, as you know. If you wanna take a good nap for the next thirty minutes, then stay here with us. Item number eight is land use ordinance and rebuttal, Greg Grant. Thank y'all. Grant states your name, your address, and you know you have five minutes.
My name's Greg Grant, I live at 1056 Feaster Lane. Last month when I was up here, you brought up the property that I own down Feaster Lane, the 1.79 acres, that butts up to another nine acres, that butts up to another five acres that's trapped on. When you did the zoning land use back in '02, uh, if you would have, my biggest problem was you're informing the citizens. You didn't inform the citizens at the time. This went down in thirty days. Took thirty days to strip people of their property rights. And you mentioned that your, your, that the county attorney back then handled that. And he worked with the Georgia Legislature. Legislature is what took gun rights from the people in New York. And that just recently got returned over in the Supreme Court because of the way they did that. When you informed, when you, when your, your lack of informing me didn't help me make a good decision. If I would've known that you were gonna change that, and I would've been told ahead of time, I could've bought that property and grandfathered in. And yes, I did. I, my, it's supposed to be God and family. And God and family is what I was looking out for. And when I come down here and I came to talk to you about that property, I told you that I wanted to put a tiny house, or possibly a mobile home. Tiny houses fall under the same category as mobile homes, so you told me no. And I was just looking out for a way to, temporary house, my son, while he was in college, he can't afford to build a house, and he doesn't want a modular home. But I own enough land around there that I can cut out a piece of property that should've made it two point five acres. You shot me down. Well, I let it go. I don't want A3 changed, I'm not asking you to change A3. I'm asking you to enforce the same rules on everybody in A3 that you imposed on me. Now, you say we may overlook stuff from time to time. You overlook a lot of stuff. Now, that's either some incompetence, or, I, I don't know what the problem is, but I'm finding a whole lot of stuff. Now, around 2019 is when I had that discussion with you. And a little bit later on, there was a case here in Lincoln County when I bought up that landfill and watched. Now, I went up to Robbie's office, and I was just throwing darts, and I did. I said, "I heard there was a landfill down there on that property." Well, he told me there wasn't. I already knew there was a landfill there. I already had aerial photos of that landfill. I'd already interviewed people working for the people that built that landfill. There's all kinds of stuff, that's called a wildcat landfill. Now, all I was trying to do was house my son temporary on a, on a piece of property that I own, not destroy nothing. But you told me that I couldn't, and the way you described it, you kinda felt like you were judging people because by the way that side way won't live, a man's character is not judged by his pocketbook. So, I asked Robbie about it, and Robbie had told me he rode down there, that landfill, and he didn't see anything. And then I asked Mr. Tim Butler a week later, when we told him he had to clean that up. So that's two different stories I've heard. I know it's there. And the new property owner is gonna find out it's there as soon as somebody else purchases that property, because I'll be sure to let them know. I think y'all got a lot on y'all's hands. As far as your county code, I did bring up the adult entertainment ordinance, because, yes, a lot of people didn't know about that adult entertainment ordinance, and if they would've been notified, those questions would've been asked and answered back in '02. That's why I brought it up. No, I don't know everything, this is new to me. But I can assure you, I'm watching, I'm paying attention. And some of your county codes, yeah, you're, you're lacking in a few areas. That's just like on the adult entertainment ordinance. And this county, Columbia County, you gotta have a buffer around. You don't have no buffers in our county. You do have a maximum footage of those feet from churches and, uh, places that serve alcohol and stuff. And it is, it is on up there. But y'all have any buffers? There's, there's a lot of stuff on y'all's ordinance. But, just like that landfill, that landfill, it says on our county ordinance that sites of land disturbance are supposed to be periodically inspected. But that went on from fourteen to seventeen. I wanna know when they periodically inspected it. So I'm kinda done, I didn't have time to realize, I had a lot going on, got some physical problems going on right now, so. I just, right now, I, I, I'm gonna let y'all just chew on that for a little bit. And I think I'm gonna make the next, um, work session in discussing all the ordinances with y'all then. Thank you.
All right, next item is the, item number nine is the UGA extension contract renewal. Agent Robert Stewart, she is in Florida, I think, on a, some kind of program she's with from the University of Georgia, so she's not here tonight. So we are going to look at this. Director Dawson, if you would, bring us, bring us this as quickly as possible, please.
Yes, sir. Chairman Commissioners, this is a renewal of a, of a, of a contract that we've been doing over the last year. The Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education pay a portion of the payroll for our, uh, Cooperative Extension Office, and, um, the actual payroll itself is done by the University of Georgia. This contract allows us to reimburse the University of Georgia for our portion. Um, it's fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Uh, the county would pay half, the county pays it all, the school board reimburses us half. And so, just asking the board to allow the chairman, authorize the chairman to sign this contract so that we can reimburse the, uh, uh, university. this contract so that we can reimburse the University of Georgia Cooperative Extension Service for our portion of the payroll. Keeps us from having to do the payroll.
Okay, you hear the motion. This is a line item, I mean, an item in the budget. Every year, this repetition, same thing. Money-wise, might be changed a little bit, but it's fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars is what our local part of the funding of the Cooperative Extension Service, County Agents' Office, as you know, the Board of Education reimburses back the county fifty percent of the cost of this, and I would like to ask, as he did, that you give, make the motion that I can sign the contract, contingent upon the Board of Education also doing the same, which we expect them to do when they meet on. Is there a motion to give you the thoughts and decide, along with the Board of Education?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number ten is DHS, Deanna Specialty Transportation Contract Director Nancy Blunt.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. For the last several years, the CSRA Regional Commission has been the fiscal agent for the, our transit grant that we get from the state, from the Department of Human Services. And so they are no longer going to be our, the fiscal agent for that grant, and Deanna Specialty Transportation is going to be the new fiscal agent. And we have a letter of intent that we would like to ask y'all to approve for the chairman to be able to sign for this grant.
Okay, this is intent for our contract. It's actually like a grant, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. This is approving that we can, that she can apply for it. When the contract comes, we'll vote separately on it as we read the contract. Is that right? So we just, we're just doing, asking for a motion that we, that allows us to be able to apply for this money. And this is something that is done every year, too. It's not a new item to us. I ask for a motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, is that second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. You want to leave if you want to. Item number eleven is Director Blaze, Recreation.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, we're gonna hold off on the lighting right after we get a hard quote from H and M, but I am here to ask for approval of eighty-four hundred dollars for Mr. Toby Washington out by Delia for the top dressing and aeration of the playing fields at the direct department.
Okay, you heard the request from Director Blaze. We're leaving the lighting off for the study to get some more study on that. You're asking for the eighty-four hundred dollars to, to work on these, what, four or five ball fields that are out there. This is something that had never really been done and in dire need of, of improvements to the, to the playing fields. Is there a motion that we, that you, that we approve this eighty-four hundred dollars to get this done, be paid out to your own fund?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I second, Mr. Chairman. I had a comment. Okay.
Wait a minute, we got a motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Clyde.
I mean, we gonna do this up, too, aren't we?
Yeah.
Because there's a chance we could save a little money by doing something as far as our county.
That's correct.
Okay, yes, Chairman.
Hopefully, hopefully it'll come in a little bit lower than that, but it's up to that, you're right.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins.
We approved this. When do you think they would do it?
We got to shoot for October, so can we get on schedule for October due to, we got soccer's about to start, Pop Warner's about to come on the yard, so we're kind of in high speed right now.
Okay, that's, that was the reason I asked that question, because I noticed you're starting soccer on the twentieth, so. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing.
Commissioner Clyde.
All right. I just go, this is the first time we've ever ready those fields and done this type of leveling and all that, so it'll all help us out and improve the production of the fields, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. And I note that the clerk thought I was going to forget to do that, and I did. Item number twelve, alcoholic beverage license clerk McKell.
Yes, we have Jimmy Rayborn who has come before us from Crazy Train Inc. to apply for his alcoholic beverage license renewal. He had received a license last year. He never moved forward with that. He didn't sell any alcohol. But it is a renewal for this year. He's applied, he's met all requirements, and since he's applying after June the thirtieth, it will be a half cost. Or so his cost will be two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty?
Yes, sir.
All right, you heard the request from the clerk on the alcoholic beverage license, Mr. Jimmy Raybin, doing business with Crazy Train Incorporated, the half a year. Is there a motion then that we accept the applicant for this alcoholic beverage license?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is that a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion?
I'm planning to abstain, Mr. Chairman, since I own that building.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
We got two votes, I'm abstaining.
Yes, sir.
I didn't give enough to pass.
Two to one, two to nothing. That's a, you can't.
Thanks, break.
You're the man.
Motion is carried. All right, put me in that position, okay, you know. All right, item number thirteen, discuss nine-one-one, regional and local. Okay, as you know, we have been talking to McDeffy, Warren, Glasscock, and Lincoln on the consolidated nine-one-one system. That would work for the four counties. Nine-one-one is the expensive department, I would say, in the top five of county government. And we're looking, just looking at ways to be able to see if we can save the taxpayers' money by consolidating and having one location that would dispatch these four counties. That's not anything that's unusual. We have counties in Georgia, multiple counties. I understand we got at least one down in southwest Georgia, the ten counties involved in it. At one time, the state was giving you some little money incentive to get you to do this. So what we have to do, we have been to several meetings on this with, with the other four counties and a consultant from Missouri, it's in your book, the package in your book. We've got to get a price for some consulting work to be done, to see if it's going to be feasible at the end of it, to go further with the consolidation of our nine-one-ones with at least these four counties. To get to that point, it's a ninety-one thousand, I like to use word approximately, ninety-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollar cost. In this cost, it is broken down to where McDeffy County pays fifty-five, I mean, fifty-seven point eighty-one percent of the cost. Lincoln County would pay twenty point fifty-five percent of the cost. Warren's at thirteen point ninety-four percent of the cost, and Glasscock, seven thousand seventy, uh, seventy percent of the cost. That being said, our cost would be approximately eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars that we would need to contribute into this. My understanding is that Warren, and I think McDeffy, and McDeffy currently provides nine-one-ones to search to Glasscock, so maybe we the last one to do this. But I'm asking for a motion that we pay out of the E-nine-one-one funds, which is recommended by the Finance Directive, eighteen, approximately eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. I ask for a motion.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. The next item, the next thing that we need to vote on according to that where it says regional and local. I have had a conversation with the sheriff, and we have discussed that the county would be the lead agent again with the nine-one-one dispatch center in Lincoln County. And that we would like to put that back under the county, as a county department, beginning September the first. For those that are listening, or for the newspaper, we, you know, personnel's not what we're looking at, so we don't want anybody in nine-one-one going looking for a new job, because we're not trying to get rid of anybody. But, but with the work that we're doing on the regional part of it, and as much money is spent in nine-one-one and all of the computer systems, and you've heard me say before, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we spent four hundred thousand dollars down there, it's all computerized. We back about at the same position, between four and five hundred thousand again, to update this equipment. Hopefully, we can patch and keep going until we can make a decision as to whether or not it's going to be a regional. But I'd like to make a, I'd like to have a motion that we bring this back under the county government again in January the first with Director Doss in charge of the procedures, policies, and personnel, and Director Walton, this IT director, and handling all the computer systems and all this. He would, in conjunction with them, they would, but he would be over the night, over the summer as far as the computers and this type of thing goes, and we not got, we don't have four or five different hands in dealing with it. That's my recommendation. I'm going to ask for a motion.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
The second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde, that we put this back into the county in September. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins.
Just for clarification, it will become effective September the first.
That's what we're shooting for. Commissioner Henderson.
Just to be sure, this is not going to require any kind of budget changes or anything like that?
No, not at this time, no. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Okay, item fourteen, discuss the purchase of property at Highway two-twenty west. This is something that's been talked about, I guess, the last three or four months, as to looking at putting a substation on Highway two-twenty at White Rock Road, Walker Hall Road, and two-twenty, not White Rock, Whale's Road, Walker Hall Road, two-twenty. This piece of property is owned by Miss Heather Metris. It's a ten acre tract. We're only looking at one and a half acres of that tract, and it's valued at about fifty-three, right at fifty-three thousand dollars for ten acres, fifty-three hundred dollars an acre, acre and a half. So we're looking at eight thousand dollar purchase price of this piece of property. What I would like to ask for at this time is that we, that we do a contract with Miss Metris, let's say sixty days, I don't want it long, it's long, we have to, maybe we can execute it fifteen days, with me. But we do a sixty day contract with Miss Metris so that the county can do the due diligence of what needs to be done as far as soil samples there, and clearing of the property, and etc. So if, if I could get a motion that we go ahead and do the contract, to get it up, and we'd execute the contract at the end of sixty days if everything works that needs to work to go into this piece of property.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, is that a second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Okay, the next item, item thirteen, is the substation that we would like to put on the piece of property that we agreeing to buy, provided everything works out with it. I know that all the commissioners are familiar with this over the last few months, but briefly, I just want to state who have us watching. We have pictures of an architectural drawing, of building, of something similar to what it would look like. I don't know where it is. I got it back here. If anybody wants to look at it, I don't know if we have that on the website or not, have we? But it's a very attractive looking building that would, that would be put there, it's going to complement. We have studied this for months. I say months, two, three, three months or so. Director Broom and others have worked at the slideshow that you've seen two or three different times. We, they took a three-year study of ambulance calls and response times, and that's how we chose this location as to where this would be. So with that said, it's not something we just did all of a sudden. We've got documentation of where the ambulance have, get the most calls, and we feel like this would be in the best place for our county's first substation. As I've said earlier, we can't look at what the ambulance service is doing today or what it did yesterday. We got to look at where we project the county to be and what's going to be happening twenty years from now. I don't think there's any question in anybody's mind that that's fastest growing area in the county, down in, down in that area, whether you're going toward Maxim or going toward Greenwood Church, but that's, that's a fast growing area, and we'd like to put a substation down. So what I would ask for is that you go ahead and approve, contingent upon now, that the land is purchased and we get it, it works, and that we build a building that's being worked on and to try to do the most economical way we can go. And that's basically what we did with the Ag Building, what we did when we renovated the old EMS building and made Sheriff Subs, Sheriff's Investigation Patrol and Public Magistrate Court. We did it in-house, and we subbed the costs, subbed, used subcontractors to do the work. That's what we really want to do this time, and to look at the building. We don't have an exact number, but we have an approximate number. As we move forward, but we would like to, to have a budget to be, of this, of six hundred thousand dollars to buy this property and build this substation on. So with that said, we would like, we'd need a vote. Did I complete everything that I needed to say on that? I think I did. It took me long enough. But hopefully, this will be a benefit to the people of the county, to have another ambulance down there. And we will be looking, as time goes by, at other areas and, and the response times and calls that are going, and we know that we are looking in the direction of the north end of the county, probably up around Midway-Fishing Creek area, that sometime in the future that the same thing would happen there. Ladies and gentlemen, we- Ladies and gentlemen, we wouldn't even be having this discussion if it wasn't for ARP funds. The county received some million seven hundred thousand dollars. We have spent some on the guidelines of what we could do over the last year or so. We have approximately a million two hundred thousand still remaining in that ARP money, that we have guidelines, that we have to spend that money on. This falls in the guideline of what we can do, but some of the things we can't do is we can't lower the mileage rate, can't cut your taxes, we can't pay off existing debt that a county or a city would have anywhere in the country. And this, this is one of the things that we feel like we can do and use. Not only that, it specifies when you have to spend this money. We have to have it committed, if not spent, by December thirty-first of two thousand and It's got to be, it's got to be designated for what it's being used for, or spent by that date. If you wait past that, you have, you would have through twenty-five. If you haven't spent the money by the end of twenty-five, which would have to be done in twenty-four, dedicated where it's going, then the county would have to return the money back to the federal credit. So we have been looking, and talking, and working to find a way that we think we can best use this money to help the citizens of the county. With that said, and I give you all a chance to make comments, but I want a motion that we would budget six hundred thousand dollars to start on this substation. Is that a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to make the motion, that we appropriate six hundred thousand to purchase the property and erect the building on EMS satellite.
Okay, we got a motion, is our second?
I second, Mr. Chairman, this is free.
Have a motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. We teach, we teach Commissioner Tankersley to stay home, won't mention me tonight. All right, uh, the next item is structural repairs, is that right?
Right, it is.
Okay, Director Dos.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as we discussed at the work session, the, uh, the fascia are all the white on the exterior of the courthouse, it's above the second-story windows, so everything that's above us now, is, uh, is original to the building, and it's galvanized metal. Uh, we've had a couple of, of leaks, and we've had some temporary repairs done. Unfortunately, the way it's hung on the building, it's, it's impractical to get up on the roof and look over to see it, and so we really need to inspect it from the ground. Uh, we've received a quote, uh, from, uh, H&amp;H, to do a structural, to actually do a survey of all of the fascia for us. Uh, that is just under five thousand dollars, so I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to approve up to five thousand dollars from Squad Six, to hire H&amp;H Industrial Maintenance to do a survey of all of the fascia around the courthouse.
You've heard the request from Director Dos, we, we got to address this problem before it gets worse. Did we approve up to five thousand dollars to do the labor and equipment, and to try to get this done, to be paid for out of Squad Six, is our motion?
No moves, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number seventeen is Corps Contract, uh, Corps of Engineers on the LPK subdivision drainpipe, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have a easement agreement with, uh, the Corps of Engineers on a, on a zero point zero zero one acre tract of land, uh, for a thirty-foot, um, drainpipe on their property. That easement is, um, they only do twenty-year easements, it is expiring, and I would ask that, um, that y'all vote to approve a new easement, this would be at no cost to the county, Chairman.
Now, motion, we accept the recommendation of the Director, to give it a rethought, to sign the contract with Corps of Engineers, for this easement that's been there twenty years, and we just extended it.
I made that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the motion is our second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion's carried. CSRA Regional Commission Contract on the County and City Joint Comprehensive Plan, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, it is also time for us to, um, uh, do an update to our, um, comprehensive plan, our joint comprehensive plan. Uh, we have met with, uh, CSRA RC, uh, and, and them, um, doing the work for the county. Um, so I asked that, that y'all approve a contract with CSRA RC, uh, for them to be able to start working on our joint comprehensive plan. Uh, there is no cost involved, uh, our yearly dues pay for the cost of these contracts, and so I ask that y'all approve, uh, the chairman to sign this contract on behalf of the county.
All right, you heard the request, is that a motion, that we, uh, sign the contract with CSRA Regional Commission on the Joint City-City Comprehensive Plan, no cost to the county?
No moves, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Comi, uh, second, motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number thirteen, pest control bids, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Chairman, um, on June the thirtieth, we opened, um, uh, sealed bids, uh, for RFP twenty-two oh oh five, uh, for pest control of the county buildings and facilities. Uh, we had three bidders, uh, the low bidder was, uh, Windgrove Pest Control, at the amount of six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars a year, um, and I asked this board to allow, um, the chairman to enter into a three-year contract with, uh, Windgrove Pest Control, uh, for that amount. This, this RFP required a three-year contract, so I'm asking for a three-year contract, um, with, with Windgrove Pest Control, Chairman.
Now, motion, there's enough recommendation, that we have a contract, three-year contract with, with Windgrove Pest Control, amount of six hundred and fifty, about six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars per year for the next three years.
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, by saying aye. Didn't I hear you say second?
You did.
All that, I get a motion, I got a motion, I gotta vote? I say aye, okay, passed, this Windgrove got the bid. All right, now we're gonna get into some more stuff. Item number twenty, is a poultry, swine ordinance that we have proposed, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if you recall, last month, y'all, um, approved a moratorium on, on commercial feeding operations, poultry houses, uh, until we could get a ordinance in place. Um, this ordinance was drawn up by Mr. Bowen, uh, who is, um, uh, an attorney specializing in, um, codes, county codes, he works with more than fifty percent of the, uh, counties in Georgia, also teaches a lot of their classes, um, and so, uh, this would be the first reading of that ordinance, Chairman? Uh, and along with that would be a overlay map.
Now, we got to, this is a whole gold overlay map.
Okay, um, so, um, it's a fairly short ordinance, Chairman.
I'll ask County Attorney to begin the reading of the, of the first reading of the new ordinance.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County hereby find that while large-scale livestock operations are of vital importance to the community and local economy, such operations, and particularly concentrated animal feeding operations, have the potential to have substantial negative impacts on the quality of life in residential districts. And whereas the Board of Commissioners find that the growth trends in Lincoln County support reserving certain areas of the county residential growth and development, while concentrated animal feeding operations in other more agricultural areas of the county. Therefore, it is hereby ordained by the Board of Commissioners as follows. Section one, concentrated animal feeding operations, Part A, the concentrated animal feeding operation known as CAFO overlay district, is hereby created as shown on the map attached here too, signed by the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, and dated contemporaneously with the adoption of this ordinance. The official zoning map of Lincoln County shall be amended to show this CAFO overlay district.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'd like to suspend, suspend the rest of the reading of this. I'd like to say that this is a, this is fairly short, though, few more paragraphs. This is the first reading, this is, will be on file in the Commissioner's office, and it would all, also be placed on the county's website, if not tomorrow, Monday, uh, for the public to continue reading this, if they want to. This is considered the first reading, it will be brought back to the commission meeting, at the August meeting for a vote on the, um, on the concentrated animal feeding operation ordinance. Okay, is, is, does that take care of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Director Seymour, we will go to, this is not only, though, a poultry, this is also swine, too, so, and poultry means more than just chickens, that's Doug's, he purchased turkeys. Okay, item twenty-one is the poultry, swine overlay map, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I think you all have a copy of that map. Uh, this would be the overlay map that would, uh, accompany the ordinance, um, and so, uh, this would also be placed on the, um, county website for the next thirty days, until our next meeting, at which time, uh, if, if this board so chose to, um, adopt that overlay map along with the ordinance. Um, I don't have anything further to say about overlay, Chairman.
Okay, is the, is the overlap, is the, is the overlay map a part of the ordinance? Is it a separate vote? I, I got it separate.
It would be a separate vote, yes. They go hand in hand, and it would be a separate vote.
Okay, I just, I, I, it is two different agenda items. This map, as he said, would be on the, hopefully on the county website, I think we can condense it down to where you can get it on, but it's also, um, in the planning and zoning office, and I have a copy of it in the Commissioner's office, too. Public would like to look at, at where we are proposing that this overlay is. For those that are listening, this, uh, an overlay map will show you the area, part of the county, as to where we will not allow poultry or swine operations in that district. That's what that map will show you, if you look at it, if you're in the colored area, you can't have it, if you're in the white area, which is mostly agricultural property, you can, um, it, it mostly protects the lake area, this is what it does. The rest of the part of the county is open, I'd say seventy percent or so of, of the county, um, is open. If you live in the area where it is colored that those houses will not be, you are still allowed up to five hundred chickens, uh, poultry, and what's the number on there?
Twenty.
Twenty hoes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that will, that will be?
I'm sorry, fifty, somebody.
How many?
Fifty.
Fifty, okay. So if you're already there, you're gonna go in, that's, that's the amount you want, we're looking at commercial-type stuff, not farming stuff. This has nothing to do with, people are in the cow business, it has nothing to do with the cattle, you can do just what you've been doing, where you're doing it, and it has nothing to do with horses, and, um, so, this will be on, too, and it will be back up at the August meeting for a vote. Item number twenty-two is a fee simple RV ordinance, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, currently today, Lincoln County does not have anything that addresses, uh, fee simple, and when we talk about fee simple, that means, uh, titled and deeded properties, uh, for RV resorts. Um, this would be a new ordinance, um, it's not a revision, it's a, it's a whole new ordinance that would go into the Land Development Code, uh, that would allow for these types of developments, um, and, um, I, as I said, we don't currently have this, this in our ordinance today, uh, and it's something we feel like, uh, needs to be in there to be able to protect us moving forward, Chairman.
Okay, I'll ask the County Attorney to, uh, to read them, this RV order.
Yes, sir.
Fee simple RV order.
Yes, sir. Note, fee simple recreational vehicle communities to be special use in A-one, A-two, and A-three, and PU-D districts. Article Roman numeral eighteen, little a, fee simple recreational vehicle communities, section thirty-four dash six hundred, purpose, fee simple recreational vehicle community means any campground or development where fee simple individual parking spaces for recreational vehicles may be bought and sold. The requirements of this article shall apply to fee simple recreational vehicle communities. Fee simple recreational vehicle parks may only be established where permitted by right or with special use permit approval. An application for development approval of a fee simple recreational vehicle community shall show compliance with the requirements of this article, section thirty-four dash six zero one permitting process, little a, application required, the applicant for a fee simple recreational?
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I would like to suspend the reading of this.
Yes, sir.
Is there any objection? There is no objection. Let me make one little short comment, for those that are listening, these, fee simple is what it said in that first paragraph he read, it's totally different from any other campground. This is a campground that's designed for overnight, uh, a week camping, it all, also has a section in there that is, is the fee simple part, is where you will purchase a little small place, not much, fifteen hundred square feet, is that what?
Fifty-five hundred square feet, yes.
Fifty-five hundred square feet, that you would purchase, if you go online, look at RV resorts, you'll see what, what this is, if, if this, if, if we have one of these in Lincoln County, it'd be a, it would complement our county, tremendously be a big help to our county. But, uh, some of those lots, if you look, they sell anywhere from two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars for that fifty-five hundred square foot. And this is what this is addressing, this addressing something, the way you actually sell that small piece of property, we don't have that in anything else in our land use plan, so this one, this would bring this up. This is considered the first reading, it will also be placed on the county's website, Friday, no later than Monday, there's also will be a copy in the planning and zoning office, and in the Commissioner's office, for the public to come and look at, and, uh, it will be back on the agenda for a vote at the second reading at our August meeting. Okay, we don't have to vote on that, we have one more item, two more items to vote on. Item twenty-three will be, there's an opening for District Four on the Board of Tax Assessor. As you know, Commissioner Tankersley is not here, but he has asked that we go ahead and do this on his recommendation, he is recommending that, uh, Mr. Brian Tankersley, uh, would serve as the District Four representative to the Board of Tax Assessor. That's all I have to say about it, uh, is there a motion, that we accept the recommendation of Commissioner Tankersley?
No moves, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. All opposed, like sign, motion carried. Item 24, is that a motion that we adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
That's second, that's quickest we've ever had, is that a motion? Got a motion, is that second? Motion by Commissioner Clyde.
I never make a motion.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion's carried, we stand adjourned.